I would like to call the Finance and Operations Committee to order. It is Tuesday, April 9th. We're at the Nashua High North Boardroom. It is 6:03. Could Mr. Guarino call the roll, please?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Mr. Kaufman is not here. Ms. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Donovan is here.
Here.
Mr. Mosher, you're joining us by telephone?
Yes, sir.
Are you all by yourself?
I sure am.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Donovan?
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the federal grants, grant funds. It's the single audit, we call it. It's part of the year-end audit. It's an audit that specifically relates to our grants that we receive from various sources. So typically, I just share it with everyone once a year to, A, let you know that the audit went well, which it did again this year, and to give people a sense of the types of funds and the amounts that we receive from, mostly from the federal government via the state. So if we, if you look at your package, on page three, it says it's a report on compliance for each major federal program, and report on the control, et cetera. And then on page four, it says the opinion on each major federal program. In our opinion, the city of Nashua, New Hampshire complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on the major federal programs. So I certainly won't read auditing language because it'll put everyone to sleep.[137.06][137.06](LAUGHING). But if you take a look on page six, page six and seven of your package, on the top of page six is the first amounts related specifically to the schools. The U.S. Department of Agriculture, you can see it's $3,261,000. That's the school lunch program, slash breakfast program also. So that's the amount we received for this period of time. So sometimes the grants cover slightly different periods, but what's reported in the audit is the amount spent during that one-year period, that one.
Thank you.
And then when you switch to the next page, page seven, you will see a list of a lot of our other grants under the U.S. Department of Education. There's first set of grants, there's sort of four of them listed there. The total is $3,160,000. Those first ones, they are the IDEA grants, the special ed funds. And if you look, if you look under the column where it says pass-through identifying number, some of them start with sevens and some start with eights. If it's a seven, then it's the end of the grant for the 16, 17 school year. If it's an eight, then it's the grant for the 17, 18 school year. So you'll notice that the, so for example, with IDEA, the $581,000, that was the end of that year's grant that was spent in '18 because a lot of these grants will, will cover a two-year period. And then below that, it talks about the, the other federal programs. And just to go over those quickly, what they are, the Title I grants, which deal with the five Title I schools. And you can see that's a total of over $3 million also. There is the Career and Technical Education, or the Perkins Grants. Those typically are around $300,000 on an annual basis. There's the 21st Century Grants. Those are the after-school program grants. The ELL Grants, the English Language Acquisition State Grants, those are the ELL. And then we have Supporting Effective Instruction. That's the Title II grant. And then the last, where it says School Improvement Grants, they call them SIG Grants. They're typically small dollar amounts. They're targeted to specific, usually Title I schools or schools in need of improvement. They're not a huge amount of money typically, but they're something where the school will use them for a specific item or two, or a program or two. So that is that. We did receive a letter from, you know, we forwarded this up to the state as required. And Tim Carney from the Department of Ed responded and said that they've received the audit, they've reviewed it, and everything is, is in good shape. So that's pretty much just a quick update on this annual process.
Thank you. That's all good news. We like good news.
Yes, we do.[342.47][342.47](LAUGHING). Us especially. Nothing like a bad audit to set your, set your time off.
Yeah.
Okay. The second item is the Student Activity Fund Audit. And I did give you the sort of hard copy booklet last night at the regular board meeting. Officially, this is an audit that the Board of Ed requests each year. And it's, it's done by Plodzik and Sanderson. They've been doing it each, each year for probably the last eight to 10 years. Basically, they go in and review all the funds where the money is raised by the students and to be used for student purposes. And so if you, if you were to flip through the book, you'll notice every single school has certain funds. Typically, in a elementary school, you'll see they might have $8,000 to $10,000 at any one point in time. Middle schools, it'll be, it'll be more than that. And then, like at the high schools, for example, the Nashua Height High School South had in-student activity funds, $225,000. So in total, on page... Page two of the audit book, where they talk about the assets and liabilities, and there's, so there's over, there's $739,000 worth of student activity funds.
Wow.
So we are a large district. Every school does some sort of fundraising. Obviously, the older students at the high school do more fundraising. But comparing that $739,000 to the last three years, in fiscal year '17, it was $682,000, and in fiscal year '16, it was $727,000. So in general, it sort of moves around that area. It increased by $56,000, the total accounts. A lot of that is, they, I'm not sure if it's every year, but maybe every other year, there's a group that goes to Hawaii. It's an ELO. I think it's the High School South that does it. Maybe it might be both high schools, actually. So basically, the kids start collecting funds. They either get the money from their parents, or they work, whatever, and they go. So that's obviously an expensive trip. So if the audit is done when they, they've yet to take the trip, the balance in that account is high. If it's done right after they've taken the trip, then the balance is low. And like I said, some years, they do it, some years, they don't. So that, that was a difference in this year to last year of $40,000. So of the difference of $56,000 in total, $40,000 of it was that, what that, just that one account.
Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
In these accounts, I know a lot of sports teams do fundraising.
Yes.
Is that also in here, under the high schools?
You'll see some sports funding in here, yes. There are some, some of the sports funding are separate booster clubs.
Oh, okay.
So they would have their own account set up, and they're, they'd have their own 501(c)(3). But I think if we take a look at, I think I was looking at that.
I just saw ski, ski club.
Yeah, ski clubs more, you know, where the kids, the kids will, it's not a ski team because it's usually younger, but it's a ski club. But I think if you look at, for example, if you look at the Nashua High School North, it's page 17, you'll see some things like the Athletic Booster Club. It's like $500 there. Then on the sports, page 19, they have $9,000, football. Hockey has a small amount.
(INAUDIBLE).
There's a tennis amount. So yeah, there's, but if you look at the high schools, I mean, there's an amazing amount of different clubs. Some of them have small amounts, and they try to, you know, a certain group of kids will set up the club, they'll gain some, they'll generate some funds, they'll spend a bunch of those funds, and then they'll move on. And so there's, sometimes there's small amounts, like $25 or $10 or something like that. So what we'll try to do, working with the auditors and the principals, is at some point, try to clean those accounts out, and we'll move those funds to another student account.
Is my understanding, there's sometimes toward the end of the year, they like, I know teachers at the elementary school often have class funds, and we were always advised to try to spend as much as we could toward the end of the year to not carry over as that across the district?
Yeah, you want, yes, we do try to, if it's class funds related to that class. Because if you collected the funds for that class, you don't want to save on it and use it for some other set of kids. You'd like to use it on that set of kids.
Right. Okay. Understandable.
Though if it's just a general grade one, for example, you can look at a lot of the elementaries, they do it by grade, and they'll, will have some money that rolls over each year. But, and I think the biggest, at the, at the elementary schools, a lot of them will have a book fair, and that's where they generate a lot of their funds. So. So the audit went well. If you go back, the audit, this audit never goes perfect, and I don't want to claim that it is. So if we switch to the page 27 in the booklet that was passed out, you will see the specific items that they noted that, where there was, let's say, a potential issue. For example, it says at the Burchell Elementary School, there was one instance where with the withdrawal form for reimbursement to the principal was also approved by the principal. So typically, you don't want that. You want the assistant principal, let's say, or the secretary to approve it if it's being paid to the principal.
Right.
And there's a couple of other areas where there were no supporting documentation. If you think about it, this audit, they go through, there's boxes and boxes of all kinds. And with all these different accounts, there's all kinds of different transactions that take place. And there's a requirement that they put together a little package for each of these transactions. So occasionally, that form does not get attached to the right check copy, et cetera, or withdrawal authorization. So we'll see that almost every year. But all in all, there's this set of schools, there's only one of the schools that was on the list last year. So, and the, and the other interesting thing, by the time we do this audit and let people know if they're not doing something right, they've probably already done it wrong in the next year.
Oh, okay.
So we're hoping, yes, it does. So we're hoping next year to get this audit done in the fall, so hopefully, I can share this with the board in October, November. So if there are some reoccurrences, they'll have the rest of the year to try to, to correct So that is the audit. If anyone has any questions on it?
Well, I'd say good news again.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. The other, the other sort of report item is the Capital Improvements Report. So this is a copy of the process, and I typically will go through this around this time each year. Each, each fall, Mr. Smith and I get together and we work on what our needs are when it comes to capital spending. Now, obviously, the list is much larger than we can ever request, but we do go through that process. We pull something together. We typically share the spreadsheet with the list of items in November or December with the Board of Education. It then gets approved. We then go in January and meet with this Capital Improvements Committee and sort of let them know, here's the things, here's the funds we would like, and here's what we would like to do with them. So they meet with each and every of the departments in the city and go through each one. And then they take all the lists and they compile everything, and they, there's a group, group of people, I think the list is in here, if where it is, maybe I didn't put them in. But basically, they, they get together, they evaluate all the recommendations, they put together a suggested spend plan. And once again, obviously, the requests are far, far over the amount of funds that are available. And it's not just cash funds, but it's also bonding funds. So they break it into two pieces. There's the bonded type funds, and then there's the more cash type funds. So sort of the longer term and the short term. And then they rate each one. If you look on page 10 of the handout I gave you, they'll talk about what they consider. Now, this is just this group of about six, six or seven people. But they'll, they'll rate items essential, is A, B is desirable, C is acceptable, and D is deferable. So they do that for all of those items, and then they sort of put together the report. So if you look on page 11, it's the beginning of where they listed all the, the long-term programs. So sort of A1, A2, you can see the, the numbers. These are the items that they listed first. You know, they listed the street paving, which I think if anyone's driving around town, wouldn't argue with that, especially this time of year. And they went through, so page 11 and 12, there's pretty much public works types items. And then they went to B. The school department didn't rate great this time. We, we didn't get until, until a C. So there were two items that we had, the, the north pavement at the high school, which was a 263, 283,000, sorry, item. And the other item was the energy measures at the high schools. Now, even though they rated this a C3, if you recall, we brought these to the board, we talked about it, we had our consultant come in. We may end up doing some of these anyway because this may be long-term, this would be cost-neutral. So even though this group rated it a C3, there's a possibility that we may move ahead with some of these energy improvements because we're going to get a quick payback on some of them. So like I said, despite it being a C, which means it's acceptable, but it's way behind all these other things, the reality is this item has a better chance than probably any of the Bs or the As lower down in the As because of its payback.
Do they, do they have to approve it?
Well, yes. The, this, this group suggests. That's pretty much all they do. Then you'd go to the Board of Alderman. So we've had a couple of meetings with the mayor. We've got a couple more coming up, or well, one more coming up. We'll meet with the CFO, and the treasurer, and the mayor, and talk more about potential ways to try to fund these cost savings. So that's in the works at this point.
Thank you.
And then there's, one thing was deferable. Then you go to page 17, and they talk about the short-term projects. And typically, that for us, you can see on the bottom of page 18, it's still rated an A and A2 versus an A1. But that is all the deferred maintenance projects. So there was a specific list, which totaled $639,000. It's, this is the amount we typically ask for approximately $600,000 a year. We've been getting the last few years in the budget as part of the whole budget process, either $1,000, $2,000, or $300,000. At this point, I believe it's only $100,000 in there for the budget. Now, despite that, the city has come up, we did get a bond for about $380,000 towards the end of, well, actually, a couple of months ago, which covered some of the items that were in last year's request list. So even though sometimes, we certainly don't get the funds in the operating budget, sometimes if there's some extra bonded funds or there's some other availability, we will pick up some money for some of those projects. Especially if it's something, let's say, like a roof starts to leak or something, you know, we will get support to get that, that fixed.
Questions? If I have any questions?
Okay.
Okay. So, I mean, that, that's pretty much it. Then there's the, the rest of the list of all the other departments. But, you know, I thought, if you just spend a few minutes, you'll look through, and you can see all the requests from all the various departments. And, you know, we all need things. As much as we want for the schools, everything we can get. There are other parts of the city that do need some of these projected funds. So it, it gives you a sense of the type of things that the other departments are looking at.
A lot of needs.
It's a lot of needs.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move to the transfer report. The first one is the, is a transfer from the curriculum, says Assistant Superintendent's Office, basically the curriculum wing of that office, where they're moving funds from supplies into the subscription line. This was for a subscription service called Nucella. And it was, it was approved back a few months ago, but they, this was just putting the funds in the right account. We had some sort of issues with the vendor and the POs, so it took a couple of months to get the whole thing straightened out. But that's what that is. It's just moving it within the curriculum budget. Then there was, the next one is a Plan Operations Transfer. As you recall, we opened the Brentwood Program in Nashua this year. So a lot of the work this past summer was to work to the building to get that open and ready for school. So in doing that, there were probably some costs that we didn't have budgeted in the right places because we weren't sure when all this was going to happen and what it was going to cost. We put the budget together, so Sean took $9,000 out of the supplies account and moved it into contracted services, and that was to work, for work done at, at Brentwood, work and items done at Brentwood. The next one is Fairgrounds Middle School. They need to, needed to purchase a refrigerator, the old one overheated, and then they decided to use some of the extra supply funds also for Chromebook licenses and the cart. And then the next one is from the Athletics Department, and that is the Athletic Director moving funds around fall, the fall and winter budgets to cover the feline deficit that she had for the spring under the tournament fees. And the last one is from Lead Street, and this was for some work they're doing over there. They're, they're having some internal staffing and meetings and things like that, and some training to work on a number of things over there. So this was to cover the costs for that meeting.
Now, one of these is over, over $10,000.
Yeah. So you're going to have to do a, you'll have to do a motion.
Motion.
To approve the transfer report.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to approve the transfer report, Nashua District, School, Nashua School District, March 2019.
Yep. Do I have a second, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, you do. Second it.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero.
Okay. We're moving right along.
Yes, we are. Okay. And even better news is item number six, contracts, there are no contracts. The contracts didn't get, we didn't get the information in time, so I had it at the bottom of the list, but we will wait till next time for the contracts. So now I'll just run through the March financial report, and we will be, have a short but sweet meeting. The next two months will probably be a little longer than this. A lot more things coming in as the year comes to a close.
As long as we have good news, we can take a longer meeting.
Hopefully, it will.
I like a short meeting with good news, but I'll take a long meeting with good news, too.
Okay. So just to let, to let you know that, so I'll run through this one more time. Once again, if you can flip to the, we'll, we'll use the monthly one where you can see the month-by-month costs, so if it's about the fourth page in the packet. And I'll let everyone know that I'm just beginning the forecast. So this is the actuals, and now that we're nine months through the, the year, I will start in, in the month of May, June, and July, you'll see the forecasts for the year So that's, the first time you'll see that is next month, and I'll get a sense to, we'll have a better sense there of how we're going to do on the operating budget as we wrap up, wrap up the financial part of the year. So like I said, the first one you'll see, it will be in May. So just taking a, a quick look, the wages full-time, you can see it was $6,801,000. That's the same sort of level as a lot of the other ones with the low $6,000. And that's because we had two regular bi-weekly payrolls, and we had the four-weekly payroll, so it kind of falls in line with the others. You'll notice the overtime accounts down a little bit. And typically, in March, we don't have the biddy basketball. A lot of the rentals that we have in the winter kind of slows down in March. They'll pick up again towards the end of the year with dance groups and things like that. So the overtime is, is lower there. The, the wages per diem, I took a look at that because it's, that's the substitutes. And if you take a look, it's lower than any other month, any other school month. And last year, at this same, this month of March, it was like $124,000. But I, I did take a look at the year-to-date through March of last year, and it's about the same as the year-to-date this year. So year-to-date, they're about the same, just the month of March was, was a lot lower than it was the previous month. So we'll, we'll keep a look on that over the next couple of months. And then we, we go down, we look at the stipends account. Stipends account is high, it's the highest as it's been, but what's in there is there's the winter coaches for the two high schools, that's about $94,000 of that. And then there's a para stipend that they get once a year. It's $250 if they're an HQT para, and they get it once a year. So that's about $64,000. So if you add those two together, it's about $158 of that $176,000. And so you can, that, that will even out through there. And then the retirement separation pay, that was a longtime secretary who left us last month. And that is the payout that she received for her vacation and whatever she was due for her, her severance. So as I've said, that account has run over again. Last year, it was over by 200 and some odd thousand. This year, it's only over by 31. We've got a, three more months. We'll, we'll see what happens, but it probably will be some more. It will run over. It'll continue, it'll, hopefully, not too much more. But kind of hard to control whether people leave or not. And I think like, there was a question last month, you know, the teachers that are retiring this year, those costs go into next year's budget. Okay. Then fringe benefits, pretty much from the city, other than the educational assistant line, and there's plenty of money in there. We'll see a lot of those in the months of May and June as teachers finish their courses. Professional and technical, that line, the first one, auditing accounting services, there's that $15,000 budget. You'll see an invoice next month, I think it's $14,500. That was the audit, the Student Activity Fund Audit. So that, that should show up, and that, we'll wrap that account up. Other than that, if you sort of look at the rest of them on that page, they're Other than that, if you sort of look at the rest of them on that page, they're kind of running the same that they've been running every month, there's nothing, nothing too high this month. Going to the next is the property services, we're still, once again, the electricity's been running higher than last year, the heating gas is about the same, March kind of brought it up a little bit over to where we were last year, but the key to heating gas will be, you know, what, what, what is going to be to spend in April and May, which should be significantly lower, so hopefully that account will have funds available in it at the end, and then the water is running sort of where it ran last year, we've got 64,000 left, there's three more months, 20, 40, 60, so that'll come in right around budget. So all in all, it's okay, the electricity's probably going to use up the whole amount of that 475, but not 100% sure, we'll have to, have to wait and see. Then there's the next set of accounts, which are pretty much the maintenance accounts, managed by Sean Smith and Plant Operations. He does, you know, a lot of that is, is supplies and maintenance things, so he, he does a lot of the spend, a lot of these things may be sitting in the truck waiting to be used, things like that, but he will, as it looks, most of those are pretty much used up, if you look at the percent used in the far right-hand column, it's all in the high 90s or the mid 90s at this point. And then, everything else, the rentals, which is Brentwood, and then some of the, the hockey rink and the swimming pool, and those things should be okay. Telephone, I think I've mentioned before, you know, the telephone voice, it's, it's running over budget, I budgeted it lower, expecting with the new phone system that we'd see lower costs, and we just haven't seen that.
Is, is anybody? I know there was talk about looking at why, were there some phones that, phone lines that we didn't need, have we, have we kind of looked?
We haven't really had a chance to do that, I mean, it was, the IT department was going to do that, and they've been kind of short-staffed again.
Okay.
So, but we will have to look at that and, and see what's happening. I mean, there's a possibility, there are some outside firms that come in and look at things like that, they take a percentage of the savings, so it doesn't really cost you anything, but if we don't have the time to get to it, then maybe it's something that we should consider, so it's kind of on my radar. Then the rest of these accounts, the spend seems pretty even, you can see down towards the bottom, there's the transportation, and those are, you know, the invoices, the large invoices are in, the 334 and the 359, and they're at like the 69, 68% spend, which is where they should be at this point. Then we flip over to my favorite account, Tuisanata District, hopefully this is the last year I have to worry about this as much as I do-
Mm-hmm.
...with our new budget. But basically, if you take a look, we've spent 3.954 already, keep in mind that we don't either get invoiced or put the invoice in the system until the end of the month. So even though it's kind of through March, a lot of those, a lot of those invoices won't hit until April, so there's sort of a lag built into that. So basically, we've got left in that account about $850,000. Did a quick back-of-the-envelope estimate, and I'm projecting this account's probably going to be over by about that same amount, about 850,000, because April to June last year was 1.7 million, we've got 850 left in the account, therefore you get that other 850. So, like I said, when I do the forecast, we'll have more information on that. And then, supplies and materials, looks pretty steady through there, a lot of these accounts are either accounts that Plan Ops has, or the school accounts, like the ed supplies, office supplies, most of those funds are in the school's actual control, and they will spend those down pretty close to nothing as the year comes to an end, I don't typically look at this and expect to have some money, there could be a little maybe leftover in subscriptions or books or something, but probably not very much. And if you look at the other expenses, the indirect costs, you see that, that, as I started saying, that's the, the funds we get back for managing the grants, so that's sort of an income item, and we had a 94,000 that we booked in March, which was basically for sort of October through January on a lot of the grants, so you're going to start to see more dollars in those accounts over the next couple of months. Year-to-date, we're at 125, we budgeted at 210, so we should, based on what we're doing now and the spend we have left in our grants, we should be able to get at least that 210 number, which will help our budget.
Okay.
And then the equipment spend is up in the 90s, which, the computer equipment, which is what we see all the time, they spend that early in the year, and the furniture and fixtures are miscellaneous, is around 55% spend in those two line items, so people, that's, that's something where people kind of put things and, and hold on to it and see if they need something towards the end of the year. And, so other than that, basically, if you look at the total used percent, it's 69.65%, and we're seven out of 10 months, which is 70%, so it's sort of right on line with where we should be. So, as long, when I finish with the forecast next month, I'll have a better sense of where we are with our labor accounts, which is our big dollars, hopefully if there's some excess in there, don't know that yet, but if there is, then hopefully that can cover the, the issue with the out of district, and if so, we should be okay, but let's wait till next month and I'll have more info.
We'll hold our breath.
Hold your breath, yeah, not, not for that long though, Dottie.
No.
And that is it.
Question?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, I have not heard anything about our Medicare/Medicaid business, and who's handling it, and how much it costs, and how much we, we get back out of it.
Okay, that is in our revenue budget, we, we get about 1.7 million, and we pay a company called MSB Multi-State Billing, they do all the billing for us, they keep all the records up to date, if there's any issues or new laws, they manage it for us, and we basically pay 8% of what we bring in. So typically, you know, that's about $130,000 a year is what they get from what we, so we bring in about 1.7 to 1.8, they get about 130,000. So the 130, we budget in our operating budget, and then the, the revenue that we get in, the 1.7, that's in the revenue budget. But we've had good success with them.
Yeah, we've had them for quite a few years now, right?
Yes, we have, and I did go to a state meeting back a couple of weeks ago, you know, there's an option if we want, there's software out there that we could buy the software and manage the process ourselves, but you would need to get yourself a really good person that can, can track all that, most of the larger districts use an outside service, the smaller districts buy the software and do it themselves, but some of these smaller districts only have, you know, 15 to 20 students that they're requesting Medicaid for, whereas we have hundreds, if not a thousand.
Yeah, no, we, I think we're, you know, much better off doing it the way we, we are right now, because if we were to try and do it ourselves, that would mean a lot of extra work, and I don't think it would be worthwhile.
Yeah, and if we, and if we didn't do a good job one year, we could lose a lot of money, you know, at least this, we're pretty much set, we know how much money we're getting each year.
Yeah, you got that right. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Guarino?
Nope, well said, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, for, for all your work.
Thank you, thank you for the good news tonight, so.
Hopefully it's good news next week, I mean, next month.
That's it, okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
The vote?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes, motion carries three to zero.
And we are adjourned at 7:43.